This conference will now be recorded.
Just need everybody to turn around, okay?
Stereo.
I haven't heard anything from Neil, so I'm not sure.
I have not either.
Neither have I.
Okay, all meeting to order. Tuesday, September 19th. Finally, board meeting. Minutes, I like the condensed minutes.
Yeah, for sure.
Executive summary. And where it's good, we have a motion to approve the minutes for August 15th, 2023 meeting.
One more question.
Second? All in favor? Okay. Sir, you wanted to make a public comment?
I'm glad to be here.
You're glad to be here? Well, that's...
No, I just, I'm on the board of adjustment. I've always been interested in planning process, so I try to be a fly on the wall.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Yeah, interesting. The way it's been done is public comment at the head of the meeting. And as a planning board, I have, both in the previous time as a chair, allowed comment during the particular item that the people wanted to speak on because it was so difficult to say what you wanted to say, then hear what everybody else is talking about and not have an opportunity to say anything. So there's an informality that we kind of had in the past, and I think people appreciated it.
And I think that's at your discretion as the chair, to allow that.
Sure.
Excuse me, Chairman. Actually, I would like to talk.
Be my guest.
Hi, everybody. Chuck Jenks, I live at 118 Pine Lake Road.
Hey, let's put the microphone up there, just so, because the microphone actually is for picking up the recording.
Wanting to push the agreement?
Yes.
It should be on. If it's red at the top, it's on. Yeah, that's great.
Okay, I'm Chuck Jenks. I live at 118 Pine Lake Road, Cape Cod, right? This is, I guess my comment isn't specific about the planning board or the direction that Cape Cod is going, because I actually endorse the town center plan and the playground efforts and the other stuff that citizens are involved in. I think that that's great. What I had observed, though, is that not very many people come to the meetings. And I do know that I think I've seen two marquees, electronic marquees that are on a trailer, that, and I don't even know where one might be now, but I think the town has two of them or can rent two of them. So my recommendation is that when there is a planning board meeting, when there is a commissioner's meeting, that a low-tech solution might yield greater participation. Everybody's online, and it's so noisy and so competitive in that space that I guess my recommendation would be, when there are important meetings like this one, slap it up on that electronic marquee, put it at Taylor Notion 58, for example. I won't get into where it should be located, but I think that might be a way to have folks say, ah, there's a planning board meeting tonight, and I don't have anything to do, maybe I'll go by. So I figured maybe I'd jump in and just say that. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, they do that over in Swansboro.
Yeah.
Yeah, they definitely do. Thank you.
Okay, discussion mailbox instruction on public right of ways. I was the one who had this put on the agenda, and I didn't know the number was 10. I knew there was a number of these concrete or brick structures, and they weren't, they weren't populated like gerbils, but they, every now and then I'd see another one come up. And even before reading the federal guidelines, which we have in front of us, I felt like with these narrow streets with 20-inch, 20-foot pavements, you know, you get two, either truck or boat trailers going side by side, and I literally pull off to the side, limp, go by, and these things could be a hazard. And I think that the US Postal Service agrees with that, but they weren't very strong in that way.
You didn't get a package?
Okay.
Are they handed out or are we turning that out?
Well...
You got the PDF. Let me go make a copy.
It's almost right. It was almost like guidelines, as I understood it.
There are regulations or guidelines?
Guidelines.
Guidelines?
Guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not regulations.
I just want to be clarified.
In addition, I've got some more guidelines, general guidelines and policies that are different from yours. I mean, it's the same, but they're a different form. If you want copies of those.
Okay, well, we're gonna get around, and if you would cover those when we get to that. But any rate, the, and thank you for all the pictures of things that were... That was fantastic. They are, I, when I first started, I started looking around, and I noticed, oh, this one's six feet off of the pavement. This one's right on top of it. And so obviously, people, when they put it in their mailbox, don't really pay attention to what the guidelines are. So what I like to do, based on the, my intent in putting this on was to address the issue of these concrete structures that house a mailbox. And let's say...
Mike, you're, just to be clear, you're looking at it from a safety perspective?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That was, that was my only reason.
That's mine.
Which one? The one on top?
No, the one on the top of page 10. But it was there when we moved in, and I think it's been there since 2006, when the house was built.
Let me refer to the agenda packet.
I think it's been there a long time. I remember seeing that thing before.
I think most of the ones on Fairway and Sutton have been there since like the early 2000s.
Yeah.
What's the address? I'm sorry.
So like, close to 20 years. 114 Sutton.
Got you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and that, in my experience, things when, that they'll populate like that, because, oh, that looks cool, or somebody in a neighborhood will adopt something unofficially, and you see a lot of them, because most of them are up there. So what I'd like to do is go around the room and see where others are on this. My issue was the safety, in particular, of having these concrete things, not anything else. And I think that the, if the US Postal Service guidelines were directives or rules or regulations, that would satisfy me, but they're not.
So has there actually been a safety problem occurring?
No, I don't know of one.
Only on Manatee where the boats go up and down, and they're, they're not brick ones, but they've knocked down mailboxes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So is this specific for that area that there's a concern?
I think, I'll tell you where I would like to be. I would like to put something in the ordinance prohibiting anything other than the standard iron posts, okay? Or the four-by-four posts, which are standard in any hardware, and 99% of the mailbox in this town use one of the other of those two. These are the exception to the rule, and I feel like it, because it's a, it's a safety hazard, especially with all the boat trailers that we have in the area.
But there hasn't been an actual thing?
No, not that I know of.
Okay.
Now, I know there's been mailboxes knocked down. It just didn't happen to hit a mailbox with the concrete structure.
I know, like, there was a resident that had like a medical problem and then like ran into two mailboxes on the house, but that can't be helped when there's some kind of random like that that happened.
Just out of curiosity, is the, the type of structure, so if it's like brick or something else, is it restrictive on the easement there, there would need to be access for utility use? It doesn't, right?
Ours has been there for like, maybe 20 years, and I think all the ones in these pictures have been there about that long. You can kind of tell by the way the house looks, the age of the house. And I have not seen or heard of any problem with them getting like in the way of the right of way in these locations. I just wanted to point that out, because I don't want to, I wouldn't want to make a rule just for the sake of making it. Like, if there's not actually a concern, it's just kind of something that could happen, like maybe if this ever happened, it'd be a problem, but if 99% of the mailboxes are, you know, the preferred type anyway.
Well, yeah, and I'm saying, I know of two of these concrete things that have come up in the last year, okay? That are new, okay? And that's the point I'm saying is, I don't want it to proliferate, because there's been numerous mailboxes knocked down, and maybe one of these days, it's gonna be one of those concrete, cause injury or significant damage to a car. The iron posts or the wooden posts hardly cause damage. In fact, when my daughter first got her driver's, I served her very first solo. She come back to the house in tears, says, Daddy, I knocked over a mailbox. And it was, it was one of those four-by-fours. So we got in the car, we went over there, and I said, I'll have you set thing fixed tomorrow. No damage to her little Volkswagen Beetle at all, I just pushed it right over. But if it were one of these things, or, and especially with all the boat traffic, trailer traffic, which are oftentimes, a 21-foot boat trailer is often significantly wider than a car.
Well, we could put in a statement in the zoning permit, you know, to remind people to follow the standards, the guidelines from the postal service.
Yes. My experience with things like this is people tend to not look into these things or say, well, you know, if I'm doing something wrong, somebody will tell me about it, okay? Or, and I just felt like this is, the US Postal Service does not recommend concrete things, and we could just, by simply changing the ordinance in the permitting process for new residents, just a statement that, you know, concrete or block mailboxes prohibited. The only thing allowed in the right of way at this point in time are mailboxes. Yeah, I mean, structures, not trees and things like that. Any comment?
Yeah, I mean, what, I think, Alex, in response to your question, I don't, I don't perceive there to be any potential harm to the right of way by having a mailbox, whether it's a brick one or a concrete one or the typical kinds that you see with a wood post or a metal post or anything like that. So I wouldn't necessarily consider that in determining whatever your position is gonna be on this issue. What I would suggest to you is that the US Postal Service, their guidelines tend to apply more to the placement, so that it's the right, the placement of the mailbox, regardless, they don't necessarily care what it's made out of. They just want to make sure that it's at the right height and the right distance.
It's accessible for the person delivering.
For their people. And so, you know, the other thing, to my knowledge, you know, if the postal service had a concern with any mailboxes in town, I would imagine they would contact the property owner and make them adjust it in some way, because they've got to deliver the mail. And so the placement issues, if it's a big concern or the materials, I assume the postal service is talking to the property owner.
Well, that's a fair point, because I have had them do that in the past at other places where I've lived. Like, if there's like too much ice, for example, you know, they'll reach out to the homeowner, and they'll say, this isn't safe for us to access, you know, we can't deliver the mail, have to figure something out. Looking at enclosure, too, the inconsistent mailbox setbacks, interestingly enough, I wonder if that's one of the streets where the property owners have placed the mailboxes back some, because they have been taken out in the past. I think, kind of hearing some of the stories here, I just wonder if maybe that's why they're, they're set back as far as they are. That being said, I think where I would support something like this is in areas where we know that it could be a problem or present a problem potentially, like if we're talking about like by the boat launches or something like that, I'd say, okay, I could see that. You know, I think it's a safety concern down those narrow streets, sure. I think if we're looking at other parts of town, I'd personally be a little bit more like leaning on the side of saying, ah, if we haven't had an issue, what, what is the other side of that? So I can see the side that you're pointing out for sure in terms of the safety concern. I just think that, you know, if we don't have, you know, some sort of issue with the right of way, I think, I think I'd kind of say that the homeowners, then they're right to do what they want with the mailbox. You know, again, I, looking at it just from a kind of a what makes sense approach, if you will. Again, I think if we want to focus on the areas where we have like boat launches or maybe like, you know, wider vehicles coming through, I could, I could see that for sure.
And we live on a, we live like where most of these are pictured, like Sutton Drive and Fairway, there's three from Fairway and one from Sutton. It's a really low-traffic street, dead-end street, Sutton goes to Fairway, and then it's a dead-end on both sides of Fairway. There are some boat owners down there, but they typically drive pretty slow down, and I've never seen them have trouble navigating any of the mailboxes. I don't know for sure if they've ever had a problem, but I haven't seen it.
Well, what would be the, I guess what I would, looking at that, right, if we were to play that scenario, and I hear you loud and clear, I'd say, what's the, what's gonna be the difference then navigating that kind of a mailbox versus just a regular one, right? It's still gonna be there. So it's like, if they hit it, I, you know, I guess, fine, there's less damage or something like that, you know, if they hit one of the standard ones, but they still hit it.
They're also having to navigate cars parked on the right of way and like all kinds of stuff. And I, I just don't, I don't, I don't know. I deal with like data and numbers and safety risk all the time. And I mean, if there just isn't like actual incidences occurring, I just don't see it as being something we need to address. Although I do see the concern for where the boat ramp is. Because in my opinion, the town would have a responsibility to look into that, since the boat ramp was put there by the town. So if there are boat owners not able to get down the street safely, then that would be a concern.
Well, the boat owners, they travel other than Manatee. They circle all the way around, and they come down Neptune around that way. So the whole part of old Cape Cod has significant boat traffic on a daily basis. Second point I want to make is the, if, if, in the right of way, you have gas lines, you have telephone lines, you've got power lines in some places, some places are overhead, and you've got water lines. And when they come in there, they're gonna take out whatever they need, because those, those facilities and utilities are right exactly where the mailbox goes. And I'll tell you how I know, when I was aware of the 24-inch depth, and I didn't go 24-inch, and I hit the cable for the telephone cables, okay? And it would, and that bundle cables is huge.
Right.
And I broke the sheath on it, and I called them up immediately, and they tore everything up 10 feet on either side of that to put a splice in that cable. And I, and all I had was a hand post hole digger doing it, and I wasn't down 24 inches, and I hit it. And I knew when I hit it. So what I'm saying is, if they ever have to go into the right of way, you know, mailboxes are coming out. And what I'm saying is, a little wooden mailbox, it's easy to wiggle it three or four times and lift it out, and then when they're done, put it back in. Concrete one would have to be around. Yes, Paxton?
Thank you. This, this illustration is on Dolphin Street.
Yeah.
You know, I know where this is. Now, the one at 405 Neptune is new, the white brick.
Correct.
Now, the thing that sticks out to me is that it's on the opposite side of the road from every other mailbox on Neptune. When I moved into Cape Cod in 1972, we had to go to the post office in Swansboro and request rural delivery, and they told us which side of the road we could put the mailbox on and gave us these rules. And I have additional rules that I downloaded to, for guidance.
Are they like local rules or US Postal Service?
US Postal Service rules.
Do you mind?
But I did not manage to get the post office at the number posted on the website to ever answer. And I frankly just ran out of time and couldn't go in to ask the postmaster. Does this still apply? Because it's a matter of economy and convenience for the carrier. Now, the carrier, if people stick a mailbox on the opposite side of the street, I've seen her literally turn around at an intersection, do a 180-degree turnaround, and go back to that one mailbox. Well, you might say, well, that's up to the carrier in the post office. That has nothing to do with you. Well, are we gonna be paying a dollar for a stamp someday? Because nobody cares about the economics of the situation and the carriers are having to do twice as much. Now, I've lobbied the town, for example, to talk to the garbage people and say, isn't it cheaper to just make one pass through town? Why do you let people put garbage cans on both sides of the road?
I addressed that with them.
So did I.
We're not interested in hearing.
Ignored, but it's just, it's a valid point.
Just, I want to comment on your point. That, the garbage, they literally have to drive twice the distance in our town. And if you look at the total miles of road where they pick up garbage, because they are, for whatever their reason, they're unwilling to go to the town and say, hey, this street, it's on, you know, the one side of the street, so that they can come down and be there half the time. Maybe they like making more money, maybe that's why it's...
Maybe, but I have asked the drivers. I said, wouldn't it make more sense to you, it'd be easier if all the cans were on the same? Oh, yes, ma'am, that would be much better.
Just if I could for a moment, are we subject or are we considered a rural?
Yes, sir.
Delivery zone? We are?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We don't have a corporate town.
Yeah.
That's right, but we're rural delivery out of Swansboro. We don't have a post office here in Cape Cod.
Okay.
Rural delivery.
Well, one of the guidelines here says, "Subject to state laws, the mailbox must be placed on the right-hand side of the road in the direction of travel of the rural carrier. In all cases where traffic conditions are dangerous for the rural carrier to drive to the left to reach the box, or were doing so would violate traffic laws and regulations." Yeah, so I mean...
Well, it's that the one-way street.
Like a one-way. So...
I don't think it's like making a danger.
I don't think, I don't think that the post office, they're into delivering mail, not into forcing things.
Anybody else want to be?
I don't, were there any other things in there that were?
Not the, in particular to what we're speaking of, no, because the other stuff has already been included in the agenda, so.
Yeah, and they mentioned things like, don't have milk cans full of concrete to rest your mailbox. So I thought that was...
I, again, I think where I, where I land on it is what I mentioned initially. If it's gonna be something like, we're looking at the areas where we're concerned about vehicular traffic, like wider stuff, boat launches, that kind of stuff, I think that I could see, you know, I could see that, and I understand that, and I would support something like that. Otherwise, you know, I think, I think that matter is between the property owner and individuals or the utility or things like that.
Okay, any, any other comments?
I'll be glad to give these to Julie for copies to be made or scanned to censor everybody.
Sure.
Yep. To address your question, I know the boat traffic in Bay Shore has a lot of them, too, okay? They have pretty much the same thing, but two of our major neighborhoods have this business. I, I just couldn't support just targeting one section of town, okay? Because that's where it's most likely to happen. And I don't even know that I would, I feel like, I'm not taking anything away from the people. Most of the people have posts, you know, wooden posts or the metal thing that you can buy over at Lowe's Home Improvement. But I was surprised, I thought there would be more than 10, but there's only 10 of these.
And Frank, Julie, that you're aware of, we haven't received any public concern for this, right? I'm just curious, like, anybody actually saying, hey, these mailboxes are new since the issue?
I've only been here for a little more than a year, and Julie, for a couple of months, but in my time, no.
Okay.
I don't know what came before that.
The police department would have those kinds of complaints, if, for the most part, if there were, if there were some. And I did not, I did not go to them. To me, it was something that was...
Listen, if it's on the agenda, I just always like to look at all angles.
Yeah, and that's a good question, because for me, like, I have to have, this is just me. I have to have evidence that there's natural concerns.
Probably might be missing something.
I'm used to dealing with the hypotheticals. And so these mailboxes have just been here for so long, except for the new one, that, and I have not seen there be a problem. And if they're still, if they're still standing and they don't look, I mean, I, I walk this area every day, and I just don't see the evidence that they're being struck by anything. You can kind of tell something's been there.
I'm not saying they have been. I'm saying that in, in, in that neighborhood, they're much less likely to be a problem than down here where people are going, I'll talk another issue later on when we get to general comments. But people down here tend to go faster, and we have long runs of road on the through streets that...
None anymore.
Well, none anymore, that's what I'm gonna talk about later.
Do you, is, Frank, is that something we could request of the police to provide us? If we were to do like a look back of some sort for like, hey, any mailbox incidents or anything?
You could at least just say if it like comes to mind or...
Or if they received any complaints?
I mean, I...
I think that's a good idea. Let me, let's just table this. This is something that has to happen.
No, no, right, but I was gonna say along those lines, if we get that data, maybe we can make a better informed decision.
Let, let's table this and, and go ahead, and I'll talk to Mr. De Silva.
So happy to, I'm happy to talk to him, or you're welcome to talk to him also. Mr. Silva's been here for about three weeks right now, so. And honestly, in our entire organization, which is a relatively short-term staff overall, there are very few people who have been here for a long period of time, but I'm happy to explore that with them, or you're welcome to, if you like. I'm not aware of any concerns that, that have come in the past, but again, happy to look at it.
Right, I'm happy to help somebody like you. I gotta do this all myself.
Understood. I'm happy to help. I don't, I don't perceive that there have been many concerns, but I honestly don't know.
Tell him to ask his officers if anybody ever complained or ever seen a knocked-down mailbox. And then we can, we can put it back on the agenda for the next time.
Okay.
Okay, so for the notes, that's table till next month. All right, the next item. House Bill 409 regarding accessory dwelling units. This was called Affordable Housing Act by our congressional people. And the, I was up in Raleigh this, this past weekend. the, I was up in Raleigh, um, this, this past weekend and, uh, the number, and, and I know why they're doing the number of homeless people. It's really significant, uh, in some of these bigger cities. There's just no place and anything that they're building is, uh, well beyond the means of most of these people. So I understand where they're going. I don't think, uh, anybody had any idea that, uh, you, you could put a, uh, well, the minimum, minimum size in the ordinances, uh, I think four hundred square feet or something like that. But if you put a four hundred square foot accessory building that was intended to house people, they couldn't afford it down here either. Because just, it's just the nature of the beast, that land, this property close to the water is quite expensive.
Where was that four hundred square foot minimum?
I think it's in the ordinance.
I thought that was done away with.
Well, I think it's still in the code of ordinances.
And so this is an interesting question. We don't see anything in the ordinance that specifies, um, minimum or maximum, with the exception of the R-ten M zone, which honestly, it's confusing when you look at the appendix. It says fifty percent or nine hundred square feet, then there's no discussion or explanation of what that means. So I, I don't know what that means, but we did not find any minimum square footage.
I, I, I just happened to bring that up in comment. Uh, I seem to see that, I'm going back many years.
Well, we used to have minimums and they reflected the covenants. But the legislation was passed that municipalities no longer have the right to impose minimum square footage in any zone. And I think Julie will bear me out.
How long ago was that?
Well, two or three years ago.
Yeah, yes, it was several years ago. It's not anything.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm just pulling that from way back.
The town, I'll, I'll hand you a copy of this. The town does have this language when it comes to accessory structures. And you'll see what it says.
Okay.
So practically speaking, we don't allow accessory dwelling units based on the language that's included in section twelve seven in here. Um, although it, it gets a little interesting from time to time and I'm sure that there are some folks in the community that have them and just they got away with it or, um, they didn't get a permit or maybe it was put in before this ordinance was approved. So not naive to think that some of these don't exist in the community, but when we're confronted with, um, building or zoning permit applications, we refer to this and we enforce this standard that you see in section twelve seven.
In fact, uh, some years ago, um, that was challenged and I went to the Board of Adjustment for, to get a variance to allow a garage apartment, detached garage apartment. And that failed and they brought the town and me, the code enforcement officer, uh, into Superior Court, challenged the ruling and the ruling was upheld in Superior Court. Uh, just that thing right there.
Well, I think practically speaking, if this becomes law, which it's passed one chamber and not the other, um, if it does become law, we will essentially have to repeal, uh, this section in the ordinance and allow these things. You know, and certainly any accessory dwelling unit, they're gonna need to meet septic, uh, permit requirements. They're gonna meet any KAMA permit requirements and those kinds of things. So, um, it's not a, it's not an automatic blanket. You still have to have the right septic permit for the right number of bedrooms and so forth.
I mean, here's the cover on the Realtor magazine, not enough housing. And it's just, it's not just here. It's everywhere. That, that people who even a two, person paycheck family, if they're in the range of a, a school teacher, a nurse, a sheet rocker, a waitress, they can't afford to live here in Cape Carteret.
Correct.
I mean, anyway, that's just another subject, but.
Yeah, I think you, I think Frank answered my questions on that. So they'd still need to meet the septic and KAMA requirements. And then this would need to be repealed. Those are kind of the big things. Cause I'm personally not against there being, like, you know, we have a, we have a shed already in, in the backyard and it's, it would have to be totally redone to put an apartment above it, but it's possible that it could be a small room up there. It's just that, um, it's like, we are already maxed out on our septic, so we wouldn't be able to do it for that room.
Right, but the county health department has got pretty creative in, in septic systems that they can put where before you never thought you could put one, okay? And my issue with, uh, and I don't think it would ever happen here because pretty much the property is unaffordable for those types of things. But people might want to put them for a mother-in-law apartment. I would see that.
Exactly right, yeah. I mean, you might have aging parents or.
Here's the point that I, that I make. The single-family development and the low density, um, that we have had in this town is because of the septic system and the low water cable, especially below twenty-four. You know, the water cable after that last rain we had was about three inches below the surface of the ground. And regardless of the septic system that you put in, without a municipal system, the pumps that takes the effluent to some other place, it goes right into the ground and it seeps into the waterway and there's evidence of that seepage with today's population. So I felt like, I know when they put this affordable on, it was really a good reason. And major cities have problems with this. I don't think it's directed at us. And I felt like that, um, that we should put together a letter from the town to our representatives saying, hey, we understand what you're trying to do. We're supportive of, of this, but can you put some language in the thing? In the bill, where, in places where it's not suitable, where there are other reasons why you shouldn't have this. And I'm saying that if you were too able to put one of the, suppose in my house, I want to put one in and I, I would have. Funny, I should ask, my twenty-five-year system is being replaced this week, okay? It just, just one of those system. I don't know that, uh, if I want to put a, my garage, an apartment or in my shed, an apartment down there and put one of those peat systems on, still the effluent from that thing ends up in the canal or Deer Creek or in the Sound.
Well, is your system failing?
Yes.
And for what reason? Are there roots in the drain field?
I got all the roots out, but, uh, those systems, um, with the septic system, twenty-five years, depending on usage, uh, are apt to fail, especially in soil where I'm at that doesn't have, where the water table's high.
So how are they gonna accommodate a new system?
What we're gonna do is tear up the old system completely.
Yes.
Come in, take all of that out, put new fill in, a new gravel and new, uh, all that new stuff. They're gonna put a, uh, a, uh, pressure manifold system in rather than the old pump tank and distribution box.
Just a quick question, Frank. Um, says, obviously continuing to monitor. Is there anything, looking at this, it says twelve point seven would probably be the big one for us to kind of revise. Is there anything we should start thinking about? Anything that you heard that this is likely to be passed? Just kind of trying to. Yeah, it seems, it seems pretty, so just trying to get a jump on it as we kind of think about it. Is this something that you think could easily become a big one for us in terms of like the kind of the planning moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a reasonable chance it will ultimately be enacted into law. I, I don't think it's gonna happen this session. I think it probably just got bogged down by the other political maneuvering that's going on at the legislature, so, um, but it did pass by a pretty wide margin in one chamber. And so that bodes well, I think, and both chambers are controlled by the Republicans and have a veto-proof majority. So I think there's probably a good chance it could happen. I mean, I think, um, if they adopt it, you're gonna have no choice, right? We're just gonna have to allow them. You can come up with some very, um, minor regulations regarding them. But for the most part, you've got to allow them. I, I would ask you all as the planning board members and the elected officials, as the policymakers of the town, to really think hard about whether or not you think this is good or bad, right? I mean, I think Chairman King and I have talked about this privately before and I understand his concerns about the septic issue and so forth. But I would also ask you to just consider, um, if they can meet the septic requirements. From my standpoint, I would ask, you know, what difference does it make if that extra bedroom is on top of your garage or maybe as part of an addition on your house, for example, right? But ultimately, it depends on the policy issues and what you want your community to look like and do. You all may have, some of you may have heard me say before, cause I like to say this. Honestly, I, I could care less what goes on inside of a structure, like it, as long as it's not like illegal or immoral or, you know, child pornography or stuff like that. But I, I'm interested in what does it look like on the outside and making it a nice community? Doesn't look attractive, um, is it meeting whatever aesthetic standards the town has? Do you have, do you park on your own property or are you parking in the yard or on the neighbors or on the street? So I always try to think of these things as, what does it look like on the outside? Cause I don't really care what they do on the inside. So I don't care if the area above your garage is just storage or if it's an extra bedroom. Um, I certainly want you to meet the, the septic permit requirements and whatever else.
Yeah, and that's helpful because I think, I think those are the things we need to kind of start thinking about because it seems like this is gonna pass. So I think that, you know, that, that's helpful to keep in mind. Sorry, Paxton, go ahead.
Well, the first line of defense for many homeowners, the restrictive covenants. For example, Star Hill, not Star Hill North, but Star Hill, the covenants specify single-family dwellings. Okay, now, the town does not enforce the covenants. The, the original zoning ordinance was mirrored following the covenants, the, the square footage of the lots, the square footage of the, of the houses, setbacks. It mirrored the covenants and that made sense. And what never makes sense is for the two to be in conflict. Because if one, it's just like mother, father. That's my, what I always say. If mother doesn't let you go to the movies, go ask father. And, and really and truly, that's, that's when the zoning and the covenants are in, uh, era. But I would tell you, as a member of the Architectural Review Committee for the Star Hill Covenants, if this passes, I will immediately resign my position.
Well, one, one thing to, one thing to note, in the, in the current version of the bill, covenants are still gonna take precedence. So your covenants will still prohibit it.
She's alluding to all the requests to change that again.
Membership in the Star Hill HOA is voluntary and the dues slowly, slowly climbed up from ten dollars a year to a horrendous thirty dollars a year dues. And the dues are what hires the attorneys to enforce the covenants for the benefit of the property value.
But you just made me think of something. Is there a scenario where now an HOA turns around and says, you know what? We like this. We're gonna let it happen, right? And so now the HOA allows for these things.
Yeah, that could happen.
That, now we have to consider that as part of the overall zoning of the town? Because of the septic fields and everything we were just talking about, sorry, a moment ago?
Yeah, so, um, and Paxton and I have had many conversations about covenants and, and zoning. But you, you have to understand that not every development in the town is subject to covenants in the first place. Um, so there are some areas of the town where there are no covenants in play and there certainly are areas of the town where they may have some covenants, but there's no formal group to enforce it. And in many cases, people ignore them because there's just no one to, to check or call it. Which is why I, I feel strongly that you really should keep zoning policy decisions separate from any, any covenants. Because covenants were voluntarily placed on the owners of those properties by the original developer. And, and basically the developer said, if you want to live here, you're gonna have to follow our rules. And if you don't, go buy somewhere else that doesn't have covenants or has something that you're comfortable with. So I, I would just, and, and Paxton and I think disagree on this sometimes. I would encourage all of you to keep the discussion of covenants from zoning completely separate.
They are completely separate. I'm just making the point that if the legislature does away with the restriction for single-family dwellings only, then the only thing the homeowner at Star Hill at least has to allow are the covenants. And, and the enforcement of the covenants is, can be done by an individual. If an individual has the money and wants to take on a neighbor who's putting something entirely unsuitable next to him, he can sue that person. But how much easier if there is a homeowners association which will take on that battle for him?
This, this old section down here is full of covenants, but they haven't been, nobody's looked at them for years and years. In fact, the original copy that I got was, you remember when copying machines?
Yeah, I remember.
Negative cop, ne, copying machines were negatives?
Yeah.
And, uh, that, that's what mine came as.
Sure.
Cause I, that was the first thing I asked for when I came down to local restrictive covenant. Let, let me ask a question to the board and to Frank, okay, and Julie. Do you think if, are we wasting our time to send a letter to a congressman? And talking about, I feel like with, uh, my issue is the septic system. And I really, if we had public sewer here, I wouldn't even be talking about this. I, it is serious and I'm telling you, if we don't do something, you can go places I've been to before where you go to the edge of the water and you'll have that stench, okay? You know, with fecal coliform.
But if they're conforming to the septic rules that we have now, so like, for example, our house is massive and it's got, it's a three-bedroom, but it's got a room above the garage and it's got an office and we use them all for bedrooms. So we're maxed out on our septic system. So we, it would not be smart for us to put another room on our house anywhere. But if we had a small house with like legitimately three rooms and we wanted to put another room on it, and our septic was put in for a four-bedroom to accommodate that room, then all would be well with the septic.
You can do that.
Yeah, and that's all we're saying though.
No, what they're talking about, the difference, the difference is, if it's attached to the thing, say I have a three-bedroom house and I, I want to add a fourth bedroom. So I go to the county, uh, health department and I say, look, I'm putting addition, I need a, a four-trent, a four-line septic system for four bedrooms. And you go ahead and you go through that approval process and you get, this is for a separate detached, uh, or a garage apartment or something like that, that may have the potential of a totally different system. You know, you might use the system, but it's more than likely you'd have to put another one in. And it might, because of the size of lots, it might be problematic. That might be the thing that kills many of them. But I just, I, we're right on the edge here in Cape Carteret with, uh, and no, with the septic systems that we have and the properties that we have and the fact that, uh, municipal system is, uh, just beyond my sight. I just don't see how, uh, we're ever gonna get there.
The ones that wouldn't work, like you just said it, they would be stopped from happening because the septic wouldn't work.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, my system doesn't work now, okay? What I'm saying is the more you get into this, the bigger the problem is for the adjacent waters, Pettiford Creek in Bog Sound. The, the more septic system and, you know, the, the, when you go to the county health department and that guy comes out and you talk to him about what you want to do and what you're trying to do. You know, they're trying to be helpful. They're trying to, trying to see if they can do something for you. And they tend to lean on the side of the homeowner rather than being, you know, use bullying tactics.
So what you're saying is that just the fact that the septic system would, there would be more septic systems in place is the problem?
Yep.
Okay, I understand what you're saying now.
I know, no problem with, uh, you know, you made up a, a good point if you added a bedroom and you needed a fourth. You know, that is fairly easy process. And it's probably just gonna be one person. But I'm considering if you put a little garage apartment that you can have a family of four and. Well, that's where I'm thinking it may go. In, in this, in this place, why, why do you shake your head it's not possible?
Because the health department would not approve that. Not for, you're limited to two people per bedroom.
And it does specifically say in the, um, the regulation that they've been reviewing to pass that it has to meet fire code.
Well.
Yeah, so that's, that's the opposite. So that's, that's the opposite.
That's probably, that's probably the, even a bigger challenge in the septic part of it. There's going to have to be all North Carolina building codes, you know, fire and everything electrical. It's got to be fully inspected and have all of those things. But what I'm saying is, with even. If you had these extra buildings, people wanted the income to rent those things out. And that's, that, that is kind of where I'm saying they'd have to put a, a two or three-bedroom system and three-bedroom system in. And that would tax the, the land we, of our town.
Well, if the health department approved it, it would be suitable soul and able to support that. But I doubt that could happen on half acre or smaller lots.
Well.
Plus it also have to meet our zoning requirements, you know?
Sure, sure.
I mean, we do setbacks, distance from septic fields, I'm just using those as examples, you know?
You know, Mike, yes, you, you brought, you brought up the point before, you're like, hey, is it worth it? You know, engaging Congress or legislature, you know, your representative about this? I would encourage any member of the public that's concerned to certainly do that. I think for our purposes, though, I think it sounds like to me, like if this goes through, there's going to, you know. We can't do anything about it clearly, it'll be written into law. So we're just going to have to kind of figure out the ways to kind of go about it. But I mean, the points that we're making right now, there is still zoning in place that would need to be followed. So it's kind of just one.
That's not any different than what we have right now, we have to follow the zoning rules.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is that zoning, North Carolina building code and all this stuff restricts it. Won't prevent this if people want to do that.
No, and, and that's kind of why I'm saying like, you know, we're going to have to watch it. And, and, and if it's going to a place that it's like, okay, we know it's going to pass. We'll, 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 we'll kind of weather that storm then, you know? I think right now it's, you would agree Frank, it's just kind of like wait and see where this is going to go, right?
Yeah, I mean, so to answer your question, I think if Mike King or Alex Quintella or Frank Rush wants to express their position to their elected officials. You certainly, all of us can do that. If you want it to be the official position of the town of Cape Carteret, asking our representative and our senator to oppose it or support it. That would have to come from the Board of Commissioners. And certainly this board could ask the Board of Commissioners or recommend to the Board of Commissioners, hey, we think you ought to chime in on this. You ought to tell Senator Sandersen that we like this or we don't like this, whatever the case may be. So, but I, I don't think the planning board itself would send the letter to, I think it would have to come from the town, the Board of Commissioners.
Your recommendation, this board and the Board of Commissioners, they saw, to do it, they should do it.
Yeah, but when you, you mentioned Congress, it's not Congress, it's state legislature.
That, that was, that was me, that was me, apologies, misspoke.
So, nothing to do with the bits?
No, no.
But I think, you know, I think we're going to have to monitor it because, you know, when it does make its way through the Senate. You know, there may very well be some amendments that are proposed that may address the concern you have or may make it worse.
If we were, let's say we were to decide to take that position. I would imagine that's something we should do sooner rather than later, right? Hey.
Well, if we're going to take that position, if we were.
Right.
It would be good to review the evidence that you mentioned for the septic seepage.
I agree, yeah, I agree.
It would just be worth a review of that evidence.
And that's certainly stuff we would want to provide as well, right? Like, hey, here you go, look, this is what we're telling you, why it's not good for the community, of course, yeah? What do you think?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I, it's been a while since I talked to the people, actually, they were from North Carolina State University. The people that were knowledgeable in that, in, in the environmental, environmental people.
Is that something the water keepers would, would have like insight in as well?
I'll tell you what, I'll look into it. And, and we can come back, this is one, another thing that isn't like pressing. The thing that, that, that bugs me about, well, everybody says, well, that is the county's responsibility, the health department. To determine whether a septic system is suitable or not. And they have written rules and regulations, but I know that it's already contaminating waters. So I know that's not working. It's like, I don't have to have, I don't have to have evidence.
I do.
No, wait a minute, you didn't listen to what I was going to say. I don't have to have evidence when I see a kid running across the street that that's not good. I don't have to know that nobody ever got, what I'm saying is, I'm trying to be proactive in our town. And I don't think there's much chance of us being able to do anything because this looks like it's got some steam. And we're going to have to react to it. And I thought, putting it on the agenda, if there's things we can do now, it would be better, maybe study, I don't know.
I wonder if like malfunctioning septic systems is just a fact of life when you have septic systems. And that, I think maybe what you're getting at here is that because you would have more septic systems. You would end up with more malfunctioning or defective ones that need to be repaired.
Well, and it's not a controversial statement either to, to say, because again, it's been evidenced by the public who's been in this room in the past, right? That you're right, sometimes there is a disconnect between just things that are passed, regulations, legislation, things and people's reality. So that's, that's not a controversial statement, that's fact, because we've seen that with our own eyes in, in action in this town. So I mean, I think, you know, the point you're making, and the point you're making, the point you're making is all well taken. I just think that, you know, we, we probably need some of that, you know, fuel, right?
The point I want to make on the septic system is not when they're failing. When, if you look at any septic systems that put in, they try to put them in, they're as close to the surface. And, and many places they'll raise the surface to get them up. Because when we have rains like we had, maybe about seven inches here in this last thing, water table. In a lot of places in whole Cape Carteret is that far below the surface. So you know, in a, a non-failing system, that water is leaching right into the sound. You know, it's just not, it's just not sheeting across the top of the water, except when you have like a hurricane, then that happens.
But what I was going to get at, sorry Frank, was that what she brought up here with this not enough housing? It's just a fact that we have septic systems, but that like housing is becoming more of a requirement. We need more housing and that's why they're maybe going to pass this bill. So it's just, we live in an area of septic systems. But I think we're just going to have to have more of them to accommodate more housing. And they're just going to have to do their best to get it up over the water table. Because I think that it's inevitable that we're going to get more housing.
Well, well, we're, yes, right now, we stand to get, what is it, twenty-five percent more build out on this thing? But the, the fact that if, and if this happens, I know that there's four or five of these little apartment places in the town. Maybe more that I don't know of, you may know more than me, Paxton. But I know there's four or five of them already in here that were put by hook or crook or unknowingly or. They're there, okay? And I don't know how many of them have people in them, or they're just like in a mother-in-law apartment.
Well, I think that's why, get into the crux of it, I promise I'll let you go. But, but getting to the crux of it, right? Like, I think, I think that's why I can appreciate where the conversation is right now, right? Because to your point, unfortunately, a lot of times, the most vulnerable are the ones who pick up the pieces at the end, right? We, we see that all the time, right? And, hey, you're going to adapt, you're going to adapt, you're along the coast, you're going to adapt to this. We're just going to do, and then, oh, by the way, we're going to react later on. And then we kind of see how that works out, right? I mean, look at all these other coastal areas right now, with all these other events going on. So the points are well taken, right? Sorry, go ahead Frank.
No, no, what I, what I was going to say to you, you know, something that just might be helpful in general. For the planning board's education and, and honestly, mine and probably other people's too, is. Maybe we could schedule someone from the county health department to come down and just do an overview of the septic regulations and.
Be great.
And how they perform their duties and kind of what the issues are. And then be able to query them about this particular question also. Probably just helpful education for everybody in general going forward.
Public would want to be here for, right, taking the gentleman suggestion with the sign.
So we can, we can invite someone to make a presentation at some point in the future about that, which I think, you know, would be helpful beyond this. But I think, you know, there's really two issues here. One is, this is really just a status report on this pending legislation, just for your situational awareness kind of thing. The second thing is, is if this legislation wasn't coming up right now and it never came up. Do you think the town's policy, the current policy is a good policy? Or do you think it should be changed in some way going forward? So that's something for you to ponder going forward and think about.
That's a great point.
We'll certainly update you as the legislation moves through the process.
I feel like our, our place down here would, I understand why they want that legislation passed.
Sure.
And I think we're unintended consequences, okay?
Always are.
You know, and, and just because, and you're probably right, people aren't, if you, if you, if I put a detached little apartment on, on my place. The people that the legislation was designed for aren't going to be able to afford it.
Definitely.
I, I, I know that, but what I'm thinking is, you know, this stuff with all these covenants with single-family developments, all that, that was a big deal. That board, through six months of litigation, to prevent that from happening here with me at the center of it. You know, I had to hire an attorney and so they really, they were serious about enforcing the one. One residence per building.
And when was that?
Pardon?
When was that, uh, line?
Two thousand and fifteen or sixteen?
And, and the issue was, somebody wanted.
Garage apartment next to you. You know what I'm talking about?
No, I can't, no, I'm asking.
I didn't want, I don't want to bring any names up, okay?
Well, but the issue was somebody wanted to put in a garage apartment?
Yes, detached garage apartment.
Next to an existing dwelling?
Yes, for a mother-in-law apartment. They, they were very clear what they wanted it for. And the, the ordinance clearly prohibits that. And they took it to the Board of Adjustment, they were denied a variance, and then they took it to Superior Court. Six, six months to get through that.
Guess what? We got one more situational awareness, is it six, seven, five?
What's that?
Six, seven, five, the other one as well, the pending Senate bill?
Are you trying to move us along?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I tried.
But the only sewer system in town is a private, nonprofit, partner-owned sewer plant. For some sins in a past life, I have been the controlling partner of that sewer plant since nineteen eighty-four. I don't know what sins I committed to get that position, but that's it. I would love to have the partners say, yeah, we'll sell the plant to the town of Cape Carteret. I would love to have, I would love to be out of the sewer.
You'd probably have to give it to them.
Well, and that could happen.
Yeah.
It could happen, but I have, I have kept a grade A rating.
Someday that's going to happen, but I don't see it in the near future. I would love to see that happen.
But I'm.
Absolutely love.
But there is support for that from me. And I've forgotten the other point I wanted to make, so if you want to move on.
Real quick thoughts, one, one is, I'm, I'm currently in early stages of investigating. Securing grant funds and hiring an expert consultant to just assess whether or not we could buy the plan. And what that would involve and what kind of condition it's in, what improvements it would need to kind of start that process. The other thing I would say to you, I think it's highly unlikely that we would ever implement a sanitary sewer system in the. Established residential areas of Cape Carteret. If the town somehow did acquire that wastewater treatment plant, I think it would focus on the triangle area and the commercial properties. And the other thing is, we're generally, there certainly are some failures here and there, but generally, these are good sandy soils. Generally, the septic systems work well here in.
Oh, they work well, but they pollute the environment, is what they do, because they can't help it to happen.
I remember the other point I was making, I want the proof, I want, I hear all this talk about failing systems. I'd like to see the proof of failing systems. Because unless there really are significant failures that are impacting our waters.
All right, we'll get the environmental people down here, we'll get somebody from the health department on sewer. Different people because they might be adversaries, okay? You know, in the same room, but we'll bring them down and we can, we can put this thing off to December or something like that. But it's something that just, it.
That's good, I, I think it'd be helpful, just a good learning session anyway, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, that's, you know, I, I'm the water guy in this town. I'm out there more than anybody else in the town.
You are.
And so.
But a lot of city people, and I'm talking about Emerald Isle, septic systems, trailer parks, have to be educated. And anytime I get a new tenant, I give them a whole package. Do not pour coffee grounds down your sink, do not pour bacon grease down your sink. You are responsible for your septic system. They don't know any better, they don't know any better, they're on a municipal system, they do as they please, they destroy us.
Oh, yeah.
You know, anyway.
Okay, we're going to move on. Senate Bill six seventy-five regarding ETJ. Very good summary, and this should be short. I, I, when I first looked at that thing. You know, I knew it was the four areas that we had in the town. And I just didn't know at that time what affected my, and being in the planning board, I think it's appropriate for us to look into these things as they come up. So I'm going to leave that discussion to you because your summary was fantastic.
Well, bottom line, it's only looking at counties of certain populations. And we don't, we're not in any of those areas. So this change in the ETJ would not impact Carteret County and therefore would not impact Cape Carteret or any of the towns in this county.
And that's, that's currently constituted, right? Like, that's not, like, as the bill's written right now, right?
As the bill is written right now, and it's not, you know, it hasn't been all the way through yet.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's aimed at small counties, I'm just going to say like Prequemans and Bertie, these are up in the northeast, just as examples. And probably some out in the mountains, just low population areas.
It, it actually started out applying to all one hundred counties. And then the League of Municipalities lobbied the sponsors to amend it to only apply to the smaller county. So I would be surprised if it somehow reversed. I, I don't think it's ultimately ever going to apply to us based on this round at least.
Yeah, you're hanging me for asking this. I've always wondered how ETJ evolved. And, you know, the counties, and especially in the south where we had massive amounts of land, you know, and you just couldn't put on. So the counties have a, a big role in, in, in. Government, okay? Up north, where every town is its own little entity, the county has, has really little or no jurisdiction. So. The ETJ, which generally my understanding is, is that we use our zoning to govern any development in those lands. And, and why, why, why did that happen?
Yeah, let me, let me say one thing first, just to clarify the bill and I'll come back to you for a second. So one of the things this legislation says is that if the ETJ was created by a special local act of the General Assembly. Then those are repealed. And so our four parcels, I've invested some energy with the town attorney and the town clerk to try to figure out if our four parcels were. Added to the ETJ by special local legislation. I can't find any evidence of that at this point. Paxton, you may know from your long history here and two of the parcels are, are yours. So if practically speaking, the Forest Service property and the other parcel owned by the state of North Carolina, it really doesn't matter. Because they're not going to develop those properties in any way going forward. So there's two parcels. One is, and they're both controlled by mandatory investments. And one is in, in the center of the triangle, the other is on the fringe of Cape Carteret near the town of Bog. And so I don't think those parcels were created by the General Assembly. Everything I've found doesn't suggest that, but if they were, the ETJ would be stripped from those areas. They would be then subject to county development regulation. The county doesn't currently have any zoning regulations. So the county would have to go through a process to develop whatever zoning regulations they wanted in those areas. And there's some timeframes that they can include it in here, it's not a very long timeframe, so that's something.
Or they could just zone it and establish zone.
The, the county could, yeah, they'd have to go through, they'd have to figure out what the landowner wanted, what the adjacent property owners might want. And go through that political process to decide that. So that's the one caveat that could affect us if we somehow learn that they were created by special local legislation. So far, I haven't found that, but I don't know. I don't know how confident I am in that, you may know Paxton or someone else.
But please pursue that, because I'd like to know.
Yeah, we can't find anything to suggest that it was, so.
You're talking about. You're talking about, like, some sort of specific act or something?
That's right, so, yeah, so let me back up. So oftentimes, the legislature will adopt laws that only apply to one town, or a handful of towns, or maybe all towns that are smaller than twenty-five hundred people, or twenty thousand people, or whatever, and those are called local acts.
Okay, got it.
If our ETJ was created by a local act, it would be repealed by this legislation if this is approved. To get back to your question, you know, historically, so parcels that are in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the ETJ, they're not in the town limits, they don't pay town taxes, but because of their close proximity to the town boundaries, legislature years ago gave cities the ability to regulate development in those areas. And it also was a time when the annexation laws in North Carolina were much more liberal, and it was much easier for cities and, and towns to annex areas. And so they wanted to be able to direct the development, make sure it was compatible with other areas of their town, because it was right next to the boundary.
Right.
And there was a good chance they might annex it. Now, it's very, very difficult for any city or town to annex property. The law has changed probably ten, twelve years ago or so. So a lot of it, I think, is rooted in those previous annexation powers. In Cape Carteret, we're basically landlocked, you've got other towns on every side of us.
And that is precisely the reason their towns, because they didn't want to be annexed.
Correct.
By Cape Carteret, and they didn't want extraterritorial jurisdiction by Cape Carteret. So they incorporated, which I don't blame them.
Well, I'm glad you said that, I didn't have to, okay? But that's exactly the reason those three towns are here.
Yes.
And it dates to quite recently.
Yes.
Some of these towns had only been in existence a year or two when I, when I first came down.
Yeah, I, I, I think, to me, as a student of local government, and I won't belabor the point right now, but I'd love to understand why those parcels are not in the town limits, but I'll save that for another conversation. Because they're like, want the donut hole, so there's gotta be some good reason behind it, so.
I just don't recall, but I would love to know if there was a, a local.
Yeah.
Now, couldn't somebody help us, couldn't the League of Municipalities, or somebody could research that for us?
Well, like I said, I asked the town attorney and the town clerk to research it, and we, we couldn't find anything, we couldn't find any local acts that created it. And so I just, but I don't know the end answer to that.
Well, when I came over not so long ago and looked at all my zoning maps on the wall, and what we need to do is find the first year that it has ETJ on those maps, and that'll give us a starting point, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's been a long time since I looked at, I can't remember anything from that.
See, I, I don't, I just don't recall. I mean, good for you.
That makes sense, because the, the bigger parcel in the triangle, you certainly would want ETJ, or you'd want it to be governed by the town, so it would be compatible with the town. The one in the edge, which is right in the edge of the county, and there's nothing in it, doesn't really make that much difference, and...
Oh, but it, it, it in and of itself is a bit of a donut hole, because you're surrounded by the town of Boge on one side, and the town of Cape Carteret on the other, so it'd be the only unincorporated parcel, it is the only unincorporated parcel in that area.
Yes.
Well, do you wanna hear the history of that? When Cape Carteret was trying to annex everything it could, the people on Highway twenty-four, the pages and the, and the residents that are now in Boge were violently opposed to it. So I offered to give the town of Cape Carteret voluntary annexation of Quillwood, which would enable them to also take in Fox Forest if they would leave my friends alone. And they did. And so, but, so they got Quillwood, and later, Quillwood Village, and, and, but there was a deal made, that neither town could annex that little twelve acres without my permission, see? So I could ask Boge to annex me, and go into their city if I chose. They no longer, nor can the town of Cape Carteret, annex somebody against their will. But at the time, they could have, unless we had this written agreement, but, and that's how it happened. So this little strip of twenty-four that's white on your, on your, on your zoning map, those are my friends that escaped Cape Carteret, literally.
It's the next movie, Escape from Cape Carteret.
You know, we'll, we'll continue to monitor this, and if it somehow takes a form that has more practical impact on Cape Carteret, we'll certainly let you know that. And if we do learn something about those two parcels, I'll be happy to share that.
That's the point, I think, is gonna be on top of everybody's mind here. Okay.
I mean, they're not doing anything, yeah, going anywhere.
Right.
Still, I'd like to know.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, moving along, ordinance amendment, UDO, updated street numbering, house numbering regulations. You know, that thing came up, I went down through Morehead City, in the Commercial District, and looked, and I would say less than half of the buildings there have a number.
This actually inadvertently got left out of the package.
So as a part of looking at our sign ordinance, this section on street numbering didn't seem to fit with signs, okay? And so I would recommend, after you look at it and talk about it, think about it, that it get pulled out and put into a section that deals with fire protection.
Okay.
And put it under a new section that we would create called street numbering. Not gonna go away, it's just gonna be placed in the appropriate location.
Right. I think that's a wonderful idea, we can talk about it in October, Alex.
I am not suggesting that.
And, and the substance of the ordinance amendment is basically the same as our current ordinance, and one of the things, regardless of what you and the Board of Commissioners do about house numbers, we are gonna make an effort to just better publicize to the public that you need to make sure you have your house clearly marked, so that emergency vehicles can get there, so.
What I wanted to suggest in that is, can that be on the permitting, zoning permit checklist, write on it, put it right on there, so that, you know, when I would have to do that, I'd go down all the things that I noted when they come into the permit, to see if they've been complied with. But that's important for police trying to, uh...
Well, I'll insert my own personal experience as a, you know, former first responder of seventeen years. It makes all the difference, to be able to find that house number, because if not, we'll literally stop and, you know, just, okay, we think we're in the area, but now we've literally got to, you know, run up to the door, or run across, or maybe knock on a door that we think might be it, because we see lights on, and it's not that. And so, you know, that can make all the difference if somebody's having something life-threatening, right? So it, it makes sense.
In my observation, in trying to get acquainted with the town, I can't find any addresses.
Yeah.
And so it's a, it's a problem not only with new houses, but existing structures.
Here, here.
And I think that's the, the bigger challenge that I've observed, that I don't know how you, how we reach out to existing residents.
I do wanna point out one thing, and I know what you told me earlier, Frank, but I, I am gonna have to just kind of point that out and, and see what, where we go with that, right? Just for guidance as we think about this, more so. So in areas where we have those HOAs that say, hey, you need to have a specific mailbox, you need to have specific numbering, you need to have, you know, those things be consistent, this doesn't pertain to those, am I right?
The HOA thing?
Right, like, this is, this is a separate, okay, yeah, because I, I will say that in my particular community, I've, I've noticed that, that some of the mailboxes are consistent with, with the covenant, but like, for instance, they don't have reflective numbers.
Well, I think that's what Paxton was saying earlier, is sometimes they conflict, and it doesn't...
Right, 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 right.
I think for the HOA, it would be important to update it to where it's consistent with the town.
So is that just like a point of awareness for them? Like, hey, bringing it up and encouraging them to, to, to kind of like, update that?
But in order to do that, sometimes you have to have eighty percent of the numbers on the reported map to, to change anything.
Is it worth, um...
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Is it worth, in, in Cape Carteret, there's a lot of houses without these numbers on it.
Yes.
And is it worth it just identifying those houses and sending them a nicely written letter that, you know, the ordinance requires, just for these reasons, important reasons, could you please go ahead?
Well, take it...
Put a number on your house.
Take it a step further, maybe it's a, it's a good point to also engage, you know, the agencies and say, hey, listen, we're thinking about it this way, because it's more of an education campaign for the public, but would you jump in on this with us and kind of maybe make it a joint effort where they're also pushing the message as well? Because, you know, I know a lot of times there are agencies out there that have those kind of, you know, public awareness campaigns, if they're out there and about doing like community nights or whatever, they'll drive that message forward as well, as like, hey, you know, these are like, sometimes they'll get themselves access on signs that they can give to people and put on their homes that are reflective, like the blue ones or the green ones that you might see at Lowe's or Home Depot. You know, I know other places in the state have had those initiatives in the past, so just a thought, you know, maybe it's, it's, it's a more of along those lines you're saying, right? It could be a joint initiative, because I'm pretty sure that they would sign up for that, right? We're, we're trying to make everybody's life easier, but more importantly than, you know, like I said, when literally seconds count, that can make all the difference.
Yeah, I, I think, so yes to all of those things. I mean, I think we certainly can remind people as part of the zoning permit process, we certainly can publicize it in like newsletters, we can send letters to people that we identify that don't meet the standard, because it's important, and it's a requirement. I mean, it is currently a requirement in your ordinance right now, and most people, I think, are gonna be eager to comply with that, so I don't think we'll have too much heartburn from people on that.
Well, one thing that kind of set it back was some years ago, I think it was an Eagle Scout project, you know, those green signs, reflective signs?
Yeah.
And it was one of those things you couldn't stop. I, I think I was sitting on the Board of Commissioners at the time, but what they didn't do is, there was no specificity about where that sign needed to be. And some people put them on the mailboxes, which are down the street.
Or opposite.
And, and it was almost made it worse.
Yeah.
Because you didn't trust anything, but I think the ordinance, as it's written, doesn't need to be changed a bit, is, it says how big, how size, where it has to be displayed, and they're usually right around the front entrance or the garage entrance, and everybody knows where to look for them, so if we could maybe tighten that up.
Do you think people would pay attention to a postcard as much as a letter? I'm just thinking about cost.
Yeah, postcard, fine.
I don't see why they wouldn't.
I mean, they'd be cheaper for the town to produce and mail out, like.
So I, I, I would, I mean, obviously, we'll do whatever the powers that be would like us to do, but I would not envision us just sending a letter or a postcard to every single property in the town. I think we would certainly publicize it in newsletters and social media and websites, stuff like that, and then any individual properties that we identify that don't, don't have numbers listed. Okay, yeah.
The ones that are in violation.
Yeah.
Don't have it displayed.
Sure.
But it's dangerous.
Um, let me, let me see if I'm clear. I, I wouldn't be sending letters to everybody, it's got something, but, you know, you went around and you found all these little mailboxes over there, so you had to drive every street. I mean, I could drive the street and tell you which houses don't have numbers on them, and that would probably bring the number down to ten percent of the total, and, and those people, I, I would think would deserve the letter, because if they don't, you know, let them know our concern.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think too, I mean, it may even mean more coming from the police chief or the fire chief than, say, the town planner or the town manager, because, I mean, the whole point of it is, we wanna make sure that our emergency responders can get to you as quickly as possible. So I think all of those kinds of activities we can undertake, so.
Can you get those numbers that are in violation?
Um, I mean, it's not gonna happen overnight, but we can gradually, and, and if you know of specific homes, please just send them to me or Julie, and we'll, that'll help us. So, I mean, it's something that we'll tackle over time and do the best we can.
I think an area that I've just noticed in my personal journey is, is kind of like along the area that are not in the HOAs, like Fox, Star Hill, that area, and they're just kind of travels, those homes are, I think, in particular, those homes are tucked away, right? So thinking about that scenario, right? If you pull up on something like that in the middle of the night, and now you've got, you know, trees or whatever it may be blocking your vision, sightlines into that home, now you've got an issue, right? And, and you're relying on your GPS to get you to that location, but that's where it ends, right? You're, at that point, you're like, okay, where is this place? And then that's where the whole, kind of the bog happens, and that's where seconds are lost.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Had to find a number, it wasn't numbered, GPS, and the GPS had me two doors down, okay?
I think this is, you know, looking at it, and I see, you know, I would support this.
Yes, so, I, I mean, I realize that we just handed this to you here at the meeting tonight, and that was an oversight on our part, but if you're comfortable recommending this to the Board of Commissioners, we'll schedule it for a public hearing and board consideration on October the ninth. If you'd like to take more time, we certainly can do that and just bring it back at the next meeting.
So you moved this from what chapter to what?
From chapter sixteen, which is signs, to chapter ninety-two, which is fire prevention. And everything that was in chapter sixteen on this topic was moved, and a couple of other things were added.
It makes sense to me to include it on the fire prevention, I would support it.
Yeah, one thing for you to keep in mind is that it basically moves it from the UDO to the General Code of Ordinances. So in the future, when it's amended, it could just be a simple decision of the Board of Commissioners, it wouldn't have to have a public hearing this first time, because it's in the UDO, it requires a public hearing, so makes it easier to change it in the future going forward, but really just kind of puts it in the right place for fire prevention, so.
All right, so you want a motion?
If, if you're so inclined.
Motion.
Second.
I'm abstaining.
All in favor?
I'm abstaining, which counts as a positive.
Yeah, well, you could vote on that.
Well, I know, but I haven't read it. I, I like to read some before I vote on.
Good.
So my abstention will count as a yes.
Okay, this be unanimous, but, okay, you got three and one abstention. I, I understand.
It's fair to let someone...
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I would have read it.
And I apologize, we didn't, I didn't catch the error until five o'clock.
And I'll, I'll read it too, and then we'll just...
So, so, okay, so do you want us to schedule it again for October for the Planning Board, or do you want me to send it on to the Board of Commissioners? And either way is fine, I just wanna make sure.
You got three and one abstention in favor, go.
To the Board of Commissioners? Okay, fair enough. To, to give you some peace of mind, it's essentially the same substance as currently exists, so it's exactly the same substance, actually, so.
Believe me, I'm the one that asked for this to be on the agenda, so I'm in favor of it generally, I just...
Sure, we got you. All right.
Okay, let's see. Future Planning Board discussions to be scheduled. First one is public right-of-way encroachments. Frank, was that, was that you, Paxton?
Let, let me just explain, the, the reason we put this on here is because these came from comments made by individual Planning Board members at previous meetings, and I really just kind of wanted to give it a placeholder, I didn't want you all to think we forgot about it, we just obviously can't do everything at the next meeting, so that was the intent behind it, to be a reminder to...
Got it.
Okay. I'm not aware of the issue of commercial vehicle parking, the reason that's on there.
Because, remember when I, in Planning Board member comments last month?
Yeah.
And I had a list of things that I asked for us to discuss in the future, right here?
Yeah, I, I just mean, what, we've had that issue before in the town, the exact one, over there on the, down there by where the sandwich place is. So, so where, commercial vehicle parking, where's the problem?
All over town, these commercial vehicles that are, are parked in people's yards and, and...
Okay. But, but some people, like a plumber, might have, drive his truck and it has a commercial tag.
Well, we just need to discuss it.
What's that?
We just need to discuss it.
Okay, okay.
You know, it's just something.
Okay. And the yard debris displacement was, placement was the fact that people...
Early.
They're early.
I remember that one, yeah.
It's like, it's like gerbils, you know, she sees, now, well, they put theirs out, must be okay, so we'll do it, you know?
Just to, along those lines, real quick, is there a preferred time that they would want to put it out, like, is Public Works looking for it at a specific time point?
Yes, we spent, that was the hardest thing in the...
I hope they weren't gonna say the day of.
We started this, I think it was in two thousand seven or eight.
Okay.
The hardest thing for us to come up with is the timeframe to allow them to put them out. We went around and around on that because what we said is we don't want to be, haven't put out any old time they want because we'll have, in the right-of-way, we'll have these things and they won't get picked up for three or four months. So we settled on ten days. And the reason for the ten days was to give, it was more than a week, so that people that maybe come down weekly could get that out there in time. And it's worked pretty good, but some of the citizens are taking advantage of it and just, or don't know, you know?
Yeah.
Do we have anything for that? Do we, we do?
Yeah, the, the ordinance says ten days prior to the collection. So for example, we have a collection on September twenty-fifth is when it starts, you know, it takes them usually five days, six days to make their way through town. So typically, when I will send the notice out about that, I will tell people the date that they can start putting it out. And I try to give them at least two weekends to get it out there. We are now picking up every, more frequently than the towns in the, in the past, so we pick up every other month now. So maybe that'll cut down on the concern a little bit going forward.
The reason I was asking the question is because in particular, I don't want to have this be the reverse where like, now we place in, in our good intention to try to do something that kind of finds a balance, that we burden Public Works either, right? Because it's like, oh, we, we make something that now might not give them enough time to get around and it causes some, you know, like undue delay or something like that, right?
They do a great job. They're fantastic at getting it up.
So what do we do if someone puts it out a month ahead of time?
Send them a letter.
Okay, so the town is monitoring that, sending letters?
What, what I did is I gave it to the Public Works people. I wrote up a letter and said, this is, this is the ordinance, and this is why we have it, okay? And I put it in their truck. And if they saw somebody that was out early, they just went hung it on their door, just to identify them. And, and it really helped control the, the people doing that. But we've changed Public Works people a couple of times since I was there.
That's a great idea, just to let people know that they should not leave it out for weeks ahead, you know?
So I mean, we, we can schedule it for a future discussion or in depth with you all, but the, the, the short answer is, is that I'm, I'm sure there's some people that put it out early and it just sits there and, and no one notices it or says anything to them. So I'm not naive to think that doesn't happen. There are some times that I'll just send the guys out there and tell them to get it, to be honest with you, just to get it cleaned up. Because sometimes it's easier just to clean it up than to go through the notification process and find people and all that kind of stuff. So it really becomes pretty situational, depending on the situation. Technically, we could find people. I'd rather not do that if we could avoid it. My ultimate goal is just have the town looking nice, right? So that's why sometimes it's easy.
Is it, is it creating though, that you're aware of, Frank, is it creating like a problem for like our actual resources though? Like, is it tying them down? Is it causing them to stop doing something that they may need to do as a regular day-to-day of, you know?
They don't pick it up, most of them.
I, I don't think it's causing a tremendous burden for our staff right now. I mean, and honestly, my ultimate goal, I would really like to see us evolve to an on-demand collection system in the future. I don't think the town's quite there yet. We made a nice improvement this year by going from four times a year to six times a year. But maybe we'll get to once a month, for example, or maybe it'll get to on-demand. But like anything else, it's the resources and.
Right.
Well, if it comes on-demand, you need a facilities and a person on full-time that can address it every day.
Potentially, yeah. I mean, that's, that's kind of the question. That's the.
It will happen.
Yeah, so I think that's the discussion that will need to happen is, is the town board willing to provide the financial resources to provide the staff to do it in a timely manner? But, you know, I, I, I hope that we'll eventually provide more frequent collection for people, but we're not quite there yet.
So future, this one? Or is there anything else tied to it?
I, I think, we just touched on it.
Yeah.
And, and again, I, I really, I, I, we can, if you want, but I didn't intend to get into discussion about these things. It was really, I wanted you to know, I didn't, we didn't forget you, basically, so.
Okay.
I think the one I'm curious about is the one that's after that D.
Yeah, so I, I will tell you, so I presented the concept to the Board of Commissioners at the August meeting. They were generally supportive of the concept. They very much want to work cooperatively with the affected property owners. And so my intent is to still spend more time with the affected property owners, meet one-on-one with them, gather their input, and then come back to you all probably at your November meeting.
Okay.
With the results of that discussion, let you all weigh in on the draft, tell you what the property owners think, and then begin to move it forward. But I just haven't had the time to really sit down with the main property owners yet, so.
Okay.
Okay, next item, the Don has left, so I will do, take Don's place or report to the VOC on Monday, October ninth. And the next point, Planning Board meeting is October seventeenth. Any other?
I put on there the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth, so it's normally scheduled for the seventeenth. I will not be here, but certainly Julie will be. Or if you would like to reschedule it, you could certainly change it to the twenty-fourth, which is the following Tuesday. Either approach is fine.
There is a chance I might not be here. We're going to Ohio that weekend, and it's sort of up in the air.
Twenty-fourth? Twenty-fourth? I, I hear the twenty-fourth.
Let me look, I will be here the twenty-fourth, so.
Uh-oh.
Oh, no, wait. Yeah, I have family pictures scheduled. I'm sorry, seventeenth would be fine.
Okay.
Sorry, it was Monday that I would be. I'm okay for the seventh.
I believe I am actually out of town on the seventeenth. I mean, I'm able to attend remotely, if that's a possibility.
You want to do a tent?
Oh, I might not be here the tent. Wait, 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 yes, I will.
Okay.
The tent is, is the night after the Board of Commissioners meeting, so that makes it a little problematic.
Tough, right.
Just prepare everything. But, so I, I mean, if you needed to, we could, but I'd prefer not to do it. That we, I, I prefer to give us at least a week before, after.
I, I'm not in favor of doing it right after.
No, I know, yeah.
Seventeenth, so how many's not here at the seventeenth?
I'm not sure.
I am not here.
I'm not here.
Well, Julie can certainly do it, okay?
Right.
But I think we won't have enough.
Right.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, sounds like the twenty-fourth is gonna be it.
Is that any better?
You have family pictures, you're saying, yeah.
Paxton, you?
I should be here.
I will be here.
Okay, so twenty-fourth then, looks better. More better.
All right.
Right? Okay.
We will officially reschedule it for the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
With a digital sign.
That'd be a great thing to have.
Yeah, right, right.
See if he'll let you use his digital sign, can't he?
So did we get any applicants for the position, for the board?
I, I, I know we've had some people express interest. I don't know how many at this point. I've overheard some conversations. But it's on the town's Facebook page and other digital platforms.
I saw Jeremy Granger filling out an application.
Yeah.
Here on, at the last town meeting.
I think we set a deadline of October thirty-first, if I'm not, I'm sorry, September thirtieth, if I'm not mistaken, for the letters of interest.
Oh, sorry, we're not, we're not at the next, like, we're still on staff comments, are we not?
Yeah, I don't have anything else really to share with you and Julie, unless you have something.
I just said one thing. I am taking a systematic review of the sign ordinance, and so I will be coming back to you. Might be chunks at a time. Business signs, just as an example, are covered in three separate chapters, but they all basically say the same thing. Also, some of our science ordinance don't really talk about types of signs.
Good point.
Okay, and so I'll be looking at different types of ordinances that do talk about types of signs, and I'll, I'll just.
Just curious, does that include LED signs, like the really new ones? We don't, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and I don't know what we want, but I might bring to you a list of these different types of signs and definitions and get your feedback on them. You know, what we want the character of our sign ordinance to.
Got it.
So that's what I'm working on, among other things.
But, but one thing you should know is a directive from the Board of Commissioners was to simplify our existing sign ordinance.
Okay. That, that came up many years ago, and I was chair of the Planning Board at the time. And with all other things, it was just too massive, too complicated a thing for us to handle, you know, and, and do the other stuff for a board that meets for an hour and a half once a month. So now it.
Simplification makes sense.
That, that'd be, that'd be great.
So would this, I mean, these ordinances would eventually end up also pertaining to the town center, what that looks like?
That's a great question.
I, I just think about like, you know, if you go up to like Williamsburg for a meal, you know, the whole shopping center area is like that really nice aesthetic brick. Even the Walgreens, it doesn't look like a regular Walgreens, it's like a brick with a nice sign. And so it really makes a difference how you have your covenants of like what the whole aesthetic looks like in the end when you're done creating everything.
But also making sure it plays into it, right? Like, yeah, I get where you're going with that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I have another question about that that I just remembered I was gonna ask at the next meeting when we talk about the town center. But is there a way for us to block certain types of businesses? Like, if we don't want a smoke and vape shop to move into our town center? Can we like put?
What is it?
It's like this, like, smokeless tobacco thing, or.
Oh, vape. I thought you said a smoking vape shop. Sorry.
Vape, you know, and then they put that like horrible tacky, like blinking neon light up.
That's how you really feel.
You just don't put it on the list of permitted uses.
Okay.
Wait, like, what are you, I'm, I'm trying to get the right words here. Case coming up with a blank, but sexually oriented business.
There you go.
Yeah, like Adam and Eve wants to move into.
Yeah, that, that's clearly in our ordinance, but I don't know about other.
So, so you can, as, as Paxton mentioned, you certainly can decide certain businesses are okay in this zone and not okay in this zone. But generally speaking, you have to allow them somewhere in the town. And that's why you wind up with these very, very tightly crafted ordinances for sexually oriented businesses, that you kind of pigeonhole them into some area that might not be offensive to people in the community, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, right, back at the sewer plants, the only place they can build.
Potentially, yeah.
That's how it works.
But, but there's certain legal considerations in doing all that stuff, too, that get a little more complicated, so.
Well, as, as far as the signs, I noticed that the Baptist Church has a new digital sign. So, I mean, there, there are.
You'd want your grandfather some things in, or give them like a timeframe or something, you know, that makes sense to change an existing. But they're, they're not a bad thing.
Be interested to see what you come up with, for sure.
Yeah, you'll have a lot to consider, trust me. Just gonna try to make it simple.
Yep.
We'll have no lack of stuff to discuss going forward.
Are we sure? I said, are we sure?
Okay, any other staff comments? Board members?
I learned one thing today that's germane to the discussion which we'll have in the future of right-of-way encroachments. We are blessed to be served by a nonprofit member-owned water supply corporation, West Carteret Water Co. You know, we have good water, low rates. I was buying a water meter today and the, and the discussion came up about sprinkler systems. And I did not know until today that here on the mainland, a sprinkler system requires an RPZ. That's a reduction pressure zone. Because if somebody runs over it with a heavy truck or something and breaks a line, water can contaminate the water supply. Back, it's a backflow preventer.
Correct, nope.
And so we need to do whatever we can within the town to help West Carteret Water protect our water. And to that end, I intend to go around, in my neighborhood, there are places where the sprinkler heads are within six inches of the newly paved asphalt on that pin drive.
Do we have any sprinkler systems on West Carteret, or don't most people do a well?
No, some people don't. Some people don't. But at least, at least we can report ones that are there. And if they need to either prove a well or get a, put in an RPZ, we should help protect our water supply. That's all.
Of course, bust one of those lines, West Carteret is gonna complain, you know, that's our money.
They come out, actually, we've had a hose running too long, and they'll come knocking over like.
Absolutely will.
A year or two later and say like, hey, you got some.
I had an underground line that burst, and, and it was a time of year in a place that it wasn't a big burst, but you, I didn't notice until I got the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, but they, they, they come out and I went looking for it and I found it. So, anyway, but they don't know until after their meter readings, you know, they see you used this many gallons and this.
That's right.
Big, long gone.
Well, they'll, when you send them the plumber's bill, showing that you prepared it, they'll give you a credit for a certain percentage.
This plumber, right, you're looking at the plumber?
Bless you, bless you, sorry. That was my, that was my.
Okay, board members? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Yes, sir.
Stand adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, everybody.
Turn off your mics.